Good evening, everybody. We'd like people to start taking their seats. We know that at the moment, we're not at quorum. So, anyone who's watching on HCAM, put on your shoes and come down. And I'll share one more thing. Anyone who's been texting me throughout the meeting, I actually have my phone on airplane mode. I'm just using it for a timer.
That's true, you have a budget.
I do. I love the baby.
Connor, how we doing? Okay, we're almost there. Come on down. We're almost there. Alright, folks, we can take our seats. We have quorum. Good evening. I call the second night of the Hopington, Massachusetts 2022 Town Meeting to Order. A couple reminders. As you approach the mic to speak, please do speak into it. We want to make sure folks watching can hear you. Also, speak through the moderator when you have questions or looking for answers or more information. A reminder also, when you come to the mic, to say your name and your address. And it's really helpful if you state your position right at the beginning. The other thing, you might have seen me keeping track of time. Tonight especially, we're going to make sure folks are staying right at that two-minute limit. So with that, we will start where we left off. So, anyone who was here last night knows that we were on Article 22. And we had a motion to end debate on Article 22. So what that looks like is we can have a discussion about ending debate. If anyone has anything they want to say, or we can get right to a vote. So, does anyone have anything they want to say about ending debate on Article 22?
Hi, Kim Manning, 32 Briar Cliff Drive in Hopington. I don't remember that the discussion was over, but I did have a comment to make. And then, also, potential amendment.
Okay, one second. I just want to check on that. Okay, so in order for... In order for you to add an amendment, we first need the motion for further to stop debate to end. I mean, sorry, to fail. So you can only add an amendment if the motion to stop debate fails.
I don't remember us voting on that, actually, at the end of yesterday.
We didn't vote on it yet, so we have to vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff Doherty, 3 Angels Way. I wasn't here last night, and I think there's a lot of people that weren't. So I need to be caught up to speed on this article. So I'm not in favor of ending debate.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so this is the first time we're looking for a two-thirds majority. So when I call the vote, it is, are you voting to end debate? We need two-thirds of people to end debate. All those in favor of ending debate on Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to ending debate? Okay, we're going to have to count. So we'll start out with everybody who wants to end debate. Please hold up your card. Susan, I will count this area. No, no, you can count. You can count the people on the floor. Yeah. Patrick, could you go outside and check the folks that are out there? And count their votes, please?
Madam Moderator, point of order. In the future, could you have everybody stand? It's harder to count when everybody's sitting, because I can't see their cards.
Yes, you need them to do that now? You want them to stand up? Okay. So folks here on my left, if you could stand up, if you are voting in favor of ending debate, please stand up and hold your green slip up. Do you have a number?
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay.
Six in the back.
Thank you. And anybody who's wondering, I'm also counting the crow's nest for HCAM.
Point of order, madam?
Yes.
I don't understand this vote, because last night, I'd like town council to weigh in. Last night, if we did not have a quorum, how could we have voted to end debate? There's no quorum.
We didn't vote last night to end debate. So tonight is the night that we're voting to end debate, because we do have a quorum. Okay. Right, so it was the order of the requests from the audience that drove what we did last night. So when someone calls a quorum question, it supersedes everything else. So once we knew we didn't have a quorum, we could not vote to end debate. We had to just dissolve the meeting.
So now you're completing the process of last night?
Yes. It is very confusing.
Thirty-nine.
Okay, so I know a number of people have come in since we started the voting. Could I ask that nobody else be, come in while we're doing the rest of the voting, please? Now we are asking people who do not want to end debate to stand up and hold your card up, so we can count you.
Excuse me, if I may, can I ask a question related to this article? No.
Eight on your right.
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Twenty-three on your left.
Patrick, did you...okay, yep. They're doing a calculation. It's very close. Okay, so the vote was ninety-eight in favor of stopping debate. Thirty-one opposed to stopping debate. So ninety-eight is more than two-thirds of the House. So we are stopping debate. So what that means is now we're going to move to a vote. The vote needed to pass Article 22 is a simple majority. So we will start with a voice vote. All in favor of passing Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There was a clear majority, so Article 22 passes. Onto Article 23, PFAS filtration system.
Article 23 PFAS filtration system. We moved the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
Select Board recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
Appropriations recommends approval. This article provides $600,000 to install an interim water filtration system. Funding will come from Water Enterprise retained earnings.
Okay, any questions?
Hi, Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane, member of Concom and head of the Open Space Preservation Commission. None of which has any bearing on this. There are fifty-six communities in Massachusetts that have this problem. It's not clear to me that depending on the MWRA is a solution. I think we're going to have to go in a more local sort of way. And I realize that that argument is over, so I've said my piece. Thank you.
Jenna Gavula, 69 West Elm Street. My understanding is that PFAS filtration systems don't work unless you have the special kind of filtration system. Or that it doesn't, it's not that it doesn't work, but that you cannot filter out 100% of the PFAS unless you have that special ion exchange system installed where you waste 25% of the water. So installing a filtration system doesn't take care of the problem 100%. And in addition to that, the connection that we're proposing to the MWRA, I would like to...
I'm sorry, that isn't part of the topic right now?
Okay, I think there needs to be more investigation there as well. Thank you.
Through the moderator?
Sure.
If I could have the slide for Article 23, please? What we're proposing is $600,000 to construct a filtration system at the Fruit Street Well Number Six. And what you see here, this is an illustrative installation that the town of Natick just installed. There are two filters that will be run in series. And as the woman just mentioned, without the ion exchange, you cannot remove PFAS effectively. So what we see here are two filters. The first is a granulated activated carbon filter. And that will be used to help remove the manganese from the water. And then the water will pass through the ion exchange resin filter. And that will remove the PFAS to non-detect levels. So we have exactly what is required to eliminate PFAS from the water.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, Kim Manning, 32 Briar Cliff Drive. I have a question. First, I support the article.
Could you come a little closer to the mic?
Yes, could you...Kim Manning, 32 Briar Cliff Drive. I have a question. First, I'd like to say I support this article. Thank you for all your hard work. My question is, I'm wondering, do we have enough water to sustain our current growth? And do we have enough water to sustain our future growth? Clean water.
Through the moderator. Our existing water supply is insufficient, and it is unsustainable. That's why we just voted to design an interconnection to the MWRA. This will help us with eliminating PFAS from Well Number Six, which provides roughly 30% of the town's water supply.
Alright, yes.
Jackie Potenzoni, 12 Wood Street. I do support this article, but my question is, what happens if we have another well that is contaminated with PFAS? What, how do we do address that? We're going to spend $600,000... We're going to spend six hundred thousand dollars for this until we get hooked up to the, if we get hooked up to the MWRA. What would we do in that case?
Through the moderator, DEP will have the same requirements for us that they have for well number six. Specifically, we must either remove the PFAS from the well or shut down the well. Uh, we'll say that all of our eight wells were tested for PFAS. Only well number six was found to exceed the maximum contaminant level. Other wells in town, the other seven, either had non-detect levels or levels that fell well below the threshold of ten parts per trillion, which is DEP's threshold for requiring additional testing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike Dion, seven Dada Pass. I'm confused. Last night, I thought I heard that to filter PFAS in my wells would be forty million dollars versus twenty-five million dollars to connect to MWRA, and this is six hundred thousand dollars to, uh, filter for well six. Can you just clarify what's happening?
Sure.
Through the moderator. If we did not connect to the MWRA supply, we would have to filter all eight of our town wells. They have iron, they have manganese, and well number six also has PFAS. So building filtration systems to filter the water in all eight of those wells, that's the forty-four million dollar requirement. So this is six hundred thousand dollars just to treat the water and remove the PFAS from well number six to bring us into compliance with DEP regulations.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-on question, would these wells still be in use after or in addition to MWRA? Or would these wells be retired if we connected to MWRA?
Through the moderator, uh, the wells would be retired.
Thank you. Um, Kim, let's let some people who haven't had a chance to speak first, but you can, you can stay up here. Yes.
Nancy Peters, two-five-eight Wood Street.
Could you move up a, perfect, thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you've made an effort for us to hear the program tonight, but this is so delayed. I'm trying, my brain is trying to watch one person and hear, and it's just not working. So I've watched the person who's already sat down on that while somebody else is speaking. Just a comment.
Sir, you haven't spoken yet on this.
Peter Thomas, two-one-five Pond Street. I have a question. In the event that we do connect to the MWRA, are we going to be, and retire the well? Is the town going to look into recovering the costs that they spent on, um, the filtration system? Can they be sold to another municipality, for example?
Through the moderator, the town will seek to recover costs from not only the filtration system, but the other components of all the wells. Uh, these are in high demand, as you heard earlier, how many communities have PFAS problems? So these can be used for either filtration of PFAS, or they can be used in other manufacturing or water filtration processes.
Follow-up question. Do you have any idea of what they sell for in a used capacity? So that, what would be the true cost in the end to the town?
Through the moderator, I do not.
Okay, I think Dale, you haven't spoken about this article.
Dale Danny Hee, twenty-five East Main Street. If we have an inadequate water supply, why are we allowing people to water their lawns all summer? I know it's even odd. Why let people waste water at all if we don't have enough?
Through the moderator. Our Water Management Act permit through the Department of Environmental Protection does have mandatory, uh, water conservation measures, which we have instituted. Uh, we keep an eye on how much water we do have in our existing wells and our ability to pump from those wells as the summer moves on. If it's a wet summer, it's not that much of an issue. If it's a dry summer and we have drought, then it becomes a very serious issue, and as we had to a few years ago, that's when we would cut back on the ability to water.
Just a follow-up, then I'm confused whether it's adequate or inadequate.
Through the moderator. During periods of drought, it is inadequate.
This problem is frustrating.
Please, I'm sorry, you have to state your name again.
Oh, of course, sure. Jenna Gavula, sixty-nine West Elm Street. Uh, this is a problem that obviously, um, pervades through our community as well as our state, as we're all having a conversation about it. Um, but it is a symptom of an overlying issue, and an issue that I think that we as a community and a state should address. Uh, I propose at a later date that we form a committee to talk about PFAS in our community so that we can put an end to the pollution of our water. Thank you.
Kim Manning, thirty-two Briar Cliff Drive. On the same note, um, I was going to recommend an amendment, but most likely it doesn't fit in the four corners, but I'll give it a try. Um, but my comment. Some towns, like, uh, Blackstone, Dover, Hingham, Wayland, Sudbury, have a water quality task force that monitors and advocates for improved water quality and water supply, as well as engages and educates their community on water usage, contaminants, and conservation efforts. I propose through an amendment to this article to create a Hoppington citizen-based water quality task force that will monitor, educate, and advocate for improved water quality and water supply in Hoppington. Hopefully, when we review the MWRA connection design next year, um, the study, um, we can also review our citizen task force findings and recommendations. In closing, if this amendment is not accepted, I hope the Select Board continues to make our water supply a major priority and creates this task force anyway.
Thank you, one sec. Um, I was advised that this is outside the four corners of this article. I think there are other ways you might be able to go about proposing a task force.
I appreciate that, just for my own education, can you tell me where I fall flat?
I'm going to ask Brian.
The article applies to the PFAS filtration system, so, um, forming a committee to deal with other issues, um, and otherwise falls outside of the subject matter of this article. And the issue is, is that, you know, when the warrant issues, it's supposed to give notice to the residents of the town of what will be discussed within the article, and that wouldn't have given fair notice to the town.
Uh, just so, uh, nobody really knew that our water, we didn't have enough water, so this is all new to a lot of us. So I think that with new information comes the ability to interject new, a new concept. If we're allowed to hear things for the first time, we're allowed to present things for the first time.
Okay, I appreciate that comment. Hi.
Hi, Tina Burl, at seven Daniel. What's involved in the, uh, maintenance of these?
Through the moderator. As, uh, the, the manganese gets separated out through the granulated activated carbon, and as the, um, excuse me, as the PFAS gets separated out of the water in the ion exchange resin, there's a backwash process that has to occur. Um, it's, it depends on how much water flows through the filters, but we're looking at perhaps on a quarterly basis, we would have to do that.
So this is sort of self-maintaining? It doesn't require people and purchasing something additional to filter?
Through the moderator, that's correct. And with our own existing personnel in the water division, we are able to accomplish the maintenance and management of this system.
Any other comments or questions on Article twenty-three? Seeing there are none, we will take a vote. This requires a simple majority. Those in favor of the PFAS filtration system, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I believe that passed unanimously. We are on Article twenty-four, the Fruit Street Well Facility Roof Replacement.
Article twenty-four, Fruit Street Well Facility Roof Replacement. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
This article provides forty thousand dollars to replace the roof on the Fruit Street Well Facility. The work is needed to protect the equipment inside the facility, and the building will have alternate uses if the town suspends water pumping operations. Funding will come from Available Water Enterprise retained earnings.
Uh, Gary Trendle, thirty-one Chamberlain Street. Question through the moderator. What would the facility be used for if it was not to, if the well was deactivated?
Through the moderator. May I please see the slide for Article twenty-four? Thank you very much. The well, the well, sorry, the, the Fruit Street Well Facility is two buildings. Uh, the, the first one in closest to the Fruit Street is the brick structure that has the slate roof, and in the back, there is the cinder block structure that has a, an asphalt shingle roof. So the, the rear building would likely not be able to be used for anything except perhaps storage, but the front brick building does have a large footprint and could be used for storage, could be used for a workshop, could be used for many number of things.
Yes, ma'am. Mike Shepherd, eleven Hill Street. Um, I'm kind of confused. We're talking about the brick building roof?
Through the moderator. Uh, the, the Fruit Street Well Facility is both buildings.
All right, so, um, absolutely in support of this article. I look at the number, and it seems somewhat conservative. I see these numbers every day. And the trim on that building, um, I looked at it twenty years ago, it was in bad shape, so I hope that the town is considering replacing the trim as well. Um, it's, it's a gorgeous building, and, and even if it didn't have anything inside, I'm all for preserving the roof, therefore preserving the building. I stand in support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. Article twenty-four, Fruit Street Well Roof Replacement. This is a a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Article twenty-four passes unanimously. Moving to Article twenty-five, Fire Engine Two Replacement.
Article twenty-five, Fire Engine Two Replacement. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
This article provides seven hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred eighteen dollars to replace Fire Engine Two through general obligation borrowing, also requiring a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from taxation limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half. The projected fiscal year twenty-twenty-three tax impact for principal and interest payments on this debt proposed is just under eleven dollars for a homeowner with Hoppington's average house, which is valued at about six hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred dollars.
Matt Kizner, twenty-one Curtis Road. Just a comment. I want to acknowledge both as we start talking about replacement vehicles for both the fire department and potentially the police department, that you're going to see a consistent theme that all of the vehicles are past their expected life cycle. I think it's worth acknowledging the work of those departments and the fact that they are continuing to find functionality out of this equipment. They are quite literally putting money in the pocket of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about this? Seeing there are none, we will take a vote. It is a two-third majority vote? Okay, let's try a voice vote first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, we don't have to do a standing vote. Thank you. Article twenty-five passes un- Article twenty-five passes unanimously. Article twenty-six, the Woodville Fire Station Repair Work.
Article twenty-six, Woodville Fire Station Repair Work. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
This article provides four hundred thousand dollars to upgrade Fire Station Number Two in Woodville by reapplying remaining proceeds from previous borrowings that are no longer needed for the original purpose due to project completions as detailed in the motion. Because the original borrowings were approved as debt excluded from the la- taxation limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half, this proposed reapropri- this proposed reappropriation also requires a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half. Because these funds are already held by the town, there will not be an incremental tax impact, but this still, this is still an expenditure to, of town resources, and the tax impact, if this were new borrowing in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, for principal and interest payments would be five dollars for a homeowner with Hoppington's average house, which is valued at six hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred dollars.
Any discussion? Okay, this also requires two-thirds majority, but we will try a voice, voice vote first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Article twenty-six passes unanimously. Article twenty-seven, Air Handling Unit Replacement.
Article twenty-seven, Air Handling Unit Replacement. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
This article provides four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to continue the cyclical replacement of air handling units across the district by replacing one HVAC unit serving common areas in the high school and one HVAC unit serving the auditorium and the middle school through general obligation borrowing, also requiring a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half. The projected fiscal year twenty-twenty-three tax impact for principal and interest payments on this proposed debt is just over six dollars.
Any discussion? Okay, the vote on Article twenty-seven requires a two-thirds majority. We will start with a votes, voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Article twenty-seven also passes unanimously. We are now on Article twenty-eight, the Fruit Street Turf Field Replacement.
Article twenty-eight, Fruit Street Turf Field Replacement. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
This article provides one point seven million dollars for the replacement of the existing synthetic turf, turf playing field at the Fruit Street Athletic Facility. Four hundred thousand dollars would come from accumulated user fees that have been collected from field rental charges covering twenty-four percent of the cost. The remaining one million two hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars would be raised through general obligation borrowing, also requiring a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition Two and a Half. The proj- projected fiscal year twenty-twenty-three tax impact for principal and interest payments on this proposed debt is just over twenty-five dollars.
I think we have a presentation.
Dan Terry, Chair of Parks and Rec Commission. I'm here with Jay Golphy.
Hold on one, can people hear, Dan? You might be able to move the mic close to you, if you can.
Thank you. I'm Dan Terry, I'm the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm here with Jay Golphy, the director of the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, I think we, do we have slides? Just a couple, few quick slides. So, uh, th- this article is to replace the, the turf field, uh, the, um, and what the project really entails is, um, when you're building a field, there's the base, which is easily fifty percent of the work, but all that needs to be addressed here is what is kind of above that base. A little bit of history, the Fruit Street Facility was built in twenty-twelve, consists of two full-sized athletic fields, so it's been in use for eleven years. We've got, uh, twelve hundred in-town participants every year that use this field in the, um, uh, in the fall and spring athletic seasons. In addition to that, we also host a bunch of recent, regional events that come down, and, and, uh, those tend to be revenue-producing. Replacing this, the, the turf is, um, really to ensure that it's, it's safe, first of all, uh, a- and we continue to have a, a high-performance field for our residents and our guests. Why replace the field, the field surface? Uh, first of all, safety. Uh, the single most important priority is the insured safety of the twelve hundred in-town participants and the out-of-town participants as well. The new surface will include a shot pad, safer infill. Um, the, the, the plan is to build a field that's pretty much identical to the, uh, the turf- The, the plan is to build a field that's pretty much identical to the turf fields that were built behind this high school a couple of years ago. Performance-wise, the technology for materials and durability has changed a ton over the past 11 years. When those fields were originally built, the shock pads that are important for, for all sorts of injuries, including concussions, were not available then. Neither was the Enviro fill that we intend to use on this field going forward. Why do this now? So the, the process that we undertook is, is about 10 months ago, we engaged with Tom Irwin Associates, they came out, did an analysis of the field, we were trying to get a feel for how long of, how long of a period of time we had left in these fields, since they were approaching 11 years old. Our understanding was, or what we anticipated, that these fields were typically last somewhere between seven and 12 years. They came out, recommended some immediate repairs that needed to be done, which we have done, but also some additional maintenance work that would extend the life of the field and we might be able to get another year or two out of it. That's what we learned through that process. The field that we're going to build is, so part of the old technology, the crumb rubber infill, gets depleted, it's not as environmentally sound as we'd like. Our intention is to build a field that is, is much safer for our kids that are using the fields and, and should last us another 10 to 12 years.
Okay, looks like there's a question already.
Hi, Jenna Kabula, 69 West Elm Street. Can you talk a little bit about the sustainability of the material and how it's more environmentally friendly, as well as if anything of the material would leach into surrounding areas?
Sure. So, material-wise, the biggest change we're going to make is we're going to go from a crumb rubber infill, which is basically shredded, shredded tires, shredded rubber, to what's known as more like a silica sand, which is organic. Studies have proven that it's just, it's a safer infill. It doesn't heat up quite as much and there's not as much vapor coming from it. The fibers that we're going to use going forward are improved, basically the, the technology all around in all the materials has improved over the past 11 years. So we're going to upgrade it, we're just going to upgrade every material. Does that help answer your question?
It does. What kind of sand was it, you said again?
I, I, well, there's, we haven't exactly picked the exact infill we're going to use. There's varieties of what's called Enviro fill, and we've engaged Gail Associates, they basically build fields all over New England, and we're going to figure out the process with them as we get closer to exactly what Enviro fill we'll use, but it will be very similar to what's being used at the high school right now.
Will this community be able to provide input as to what materials you choose for the final design?
I suppose.
Sure.
Thank you.
If, if, I mean, if you want to send a note to the Parks and Rec Commissioner or attend one of our meetings with a concern, but our hope is to start to move forward with, make decisions and move forward with the project very soon. Part of the reason why we want to move forward quickly is so there's no interruption, or as little interruption as possible with, with having the fields available.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. I am a coach in Hopkinton youth soccer. I'm also a player on Sunday in the Over the Hill League. I stand in support of this. I have a question for the, the Parks and Rec. What is the timing of when you plan to do the rip and replace, and will that be disruptive to the youth sports, or, you know, or the users of the field? Thank you.
Sure. Our timeline right now, if all things go well at this meeting and at, at the vote, we would like to begin construction as soon as the soccer season ends, so probably late June, and our plan is to complete the construction in August.
Jeff Doherty, 3 Angels Way. Through the moderator, Dan, I remember serving on CPC with you when we originally funded this project. I don't remember the cost, I thought it was $500,000, it may have been a million, but you said that half the cost is in the prep work before they actually put down the material. So isn't that prep work already done if we have an existing field? Yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear, Jeff, thanks for the question. I wasn't on CPC back then, I was not involved when this field was initially built. But the, the, all we're doing is, is above, we're not doing that prep work as part of this project. So the, the money here is strictly for the shock pad and the infill and the construction and the, and the turf. The base layer is, is good to go and the drainage, that's, that's remaining intact. That's part of the reason we have a, a high degree of confidence that there'll be as little disruption as possible to the season. Those fields don't typically get used much during the summer, so that's the time when we're hoping construction can occur. Thank you. Moderator, if I could have a follow-up question for Mr. Gulphy. I remember a couple of years ago that there was a globe spotlight team that did an analysis on these turf fields, and the material that they used that is chopped up tires was detrimental and caused problems with kids. So could we have a follow-up answer on that?
Sure, so there's, it's a complicated question. A lot of it depends on where the material is sourced from. Crumb rubber comes from a lot of different sources. But yes, there have been studies that have potentially linked crumb rubber to, to all different types of ailments. As far as I know, and Dan and I both went to a seminar on this, they haven't been able to exactly prove it, but they haven't been able to disprove it either. Either way, we're not going to be using crumb rubber going forward. It's not our intention.
Thanks.
Jackie Potenzoni, 12 Wood Street. I just want to say I voted for the first turf, and I'm glad to see that we're actually maintaining it and replacing it. My question is, what is the durability of the new turf and how long will the new turf last?
Sure, thank you. Typically, these fields last for eight to 12 years. If you maintain them well, you maximize the life of the fields. If you don't maintain them well, or if they're overused, you get less. My hope is to get 10 years out of it, possibly more.
Thank you.
Hi, Alana Cassidy, 19 Eastview Road. I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Thank you. I need somebody to second that motion.
Oh. Can I ask a question?
Sorry, there was a motion to, to end discussion, so we're just going to discuss ending discussion.
So I can't ask a question?
Okay, you cannot. So we're going to take a vote on ending discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'm sorry, the time for questions has ended. We're now going to vote. We need a two-thirds majority for replacing the Fruit Street fields. We'll start with a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Yes, so we had two-thirds, so the motion passes.
Sorry.
We need to take a standing vote for this because of, it is a bond. So everybody who is in favor of replacing the Fruit Street fields, please stand and hold your pass. Three in the back hall. Thank you. Thank you.
78. 73 on your left.
Thank you. All opposed, please stand and hold your green paper high. Patrick, can I ask you to check back there, please? Thank you.
Two on your right.
Five on your left.
Thank you, everybody. The vote does pass. It is 168 to 7. We are moving on to Article 29, the Marathon School Addition Cost Increase.
Article 29, Marathon School Addition Cost Increase. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Capitol Improvements recommends approval.
The 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Article 17 approved $3,625,000 to construct four additional classrooms at Marathon School. The project will be, was, the project will be bid in late spring 2022, and construction is estimated to start in December 2022. The recent surge in inflation has significantly increased the estimated costs necessary to complete the project. This request is a 19% increase from the original appropriation. The cost increase is, is consistent with the rise in commodity and labor prices. This article would be funded through the reappropriation of $695,000 in bond proceeds that were raised for the original construction of the Marathon School, but which remain unspent because of the original Marathon School was constructed below budget. Because the original borrowings were approved as debt excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Prop 2 and 1/2, this proposed reappr- reappropriation also requires a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. Because these funds are already held by the town, there will not be an incremental tax But this is still an expenditure of town resources and the tax impact, if this were borrowing in fiscal year 2023, for principal and interest payments would just be under $7.
Are there any questions about the Marathon School Cost Increase? Okay, we also need two-thirds majority on this one. Since we know we need a standing vote to report actual numbers, we'll just start with that. So everybody in favor of the Marathon School Addition Cost Increase, please stand and hold your ballot, or, sorry, your paper.
We have two in the back hall.
Thank you.
65.
All opposed, please stand and hold your ballot, or your little piece of paper. Patrick, I don't know if, did you, zero, okay.
Zero.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm getting zero, so if anyone thought they were voting no. Okay, Article 29 passes unanimously. Article 30, Lake Maspinock Dam Area Repair Work.
Article 30, Lake Maspinock Dam Area Repair Work. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Capitol Improvements recommends approval.
This article provides $400,000 for repair work on and around the Lake Maspinock Dam by applying, by reapplying remaining proceeds from previous borrowings that are no longer needed for the original purpose due to project completions as detailed in the motion. Because the original borrowings were approved as debt excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, this proposed reappropriation also requires a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. Because these funds are already held by the town, there will not be an incremental tax impact, but this still is an expenditure of town resources and the tax impact, if this were new borrowing in fiscal year 2023, for principal and interest payments would be $5 for a homeowner.
Seeing there are no questions, this is a two-thirds majority, we're going to try with a voice vote first. All those in favor of the Lake Maspinock Repair Work, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing that there were none, Article 30 passes unanimously. Article 31, Community Preservation Funds.
Article 31, Community Preservation Funds. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Are you CPC?
Yes.
Okay, what is your recommendation?
Ken Weiss, Menel 145, Ash Street, speaking as chair of the Community Preservation Committee. We support the, our motion. I thought we would be making the motion, but that's okay.
Yeah, it's, it is written here that the appropriation committee is making the motion. Yeah, it is written here that the Appropriation Committee is making the motion.
This article provides appropriation for reserve deposits totaling $1,753,150 for community preservation from estimated fiscal year 2023 as shown in the motion by recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, are there any questions about Article thirty-one?
Amy Groves, Two College Street. At Two College Street, I'm adjacent to Hayden Row. So I have a question about the last line item on this article, allocating for budget reserve. What are the parameters under which this can be spent? Is there any possibility that, for instance, a committee like the Upper Charles Trail Committee could come to the Community Preservation Committee, request that this money be spent on putting a trail along Hayden Row? If that were to happen, would there be any further input from the community or oversight? Or can this money just be spent on anything?
Do you know?
Yes, of course. All of our money that we reserve into the buckets in this article have to come before town meeting for approval. And the next article, we're doing this year's approved projects. So everything that comes into this bucket, including the state matching funds, will be appropriated and spent by the town meeting. We will make a recommendation. We hold hearings every fall and into the springtime in preparation for determining which budgets, which projects we fund.
Hi.
Hi, Scott Nowitz, 175 Hayden Row, for the Chair. You might have just answered the question, so... But the last article, the last item of $1,51,890, that's a lot of money. With all due respect, we have a lot of confidence and appreciate your efforts, but it's a lot of money for sort of an open checkbook. Do you have an existing priority list that you have earmarked for this?
Okay, excellent question. First of all, by state law, we have to put ten percent into the buckets that are before that one. And then the rest of the sixty percent can go into a budgeted reserve or undesignedated fund. And that can only be spent in the four categories that are above. So if we have a large piece of open space, we will dip into here. Or if we have a very large project that we're doing for, say, pickleball courts or whatever, we might dip into this particular fund. So it still has to be done for recreation, historic resources preservation, community housing, and open space. Those are the only four categories CPC is allowed to spend money on. And as I said, every fall, we request applicants, people to apply for meaningful or good projects, and that application is due mid-October this coming year or this year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about Article thirty-one? Let's vote on it. We need a simple majority. All in favor of Article thirty-one, Community Preservation Funds, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, Article thirty-two, Community Preservation Recommendations.
Ready for the motion?
Yeah, yes, if you want to make a motion, that's great.
Ken Weiss, Menel 145, Ash Street, speaking as Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I move the motion as written in the warrant articles and motions document.
Ken, just to clarify, there were two motions, right? So you're moving the first one, right?
This is the first one, yes.
Select Board recommends approval of the first motion.
Okay, so just drawing folks' attention to it, this is the first time we've had an article that has two sections, motion one and motion two. So in my packet, it is page thirty and thirty-one. So we are talking about motion one now. The Select Board recommended motion one, Amy.
Okay, yes, Select Board recommends approval of motion one.
Okay, thanks. And Mike?
Appropriation Committee recommends approval of motion one.
Okay, and CPC? Matt? Sorry.
So capital supports items what will be F, G, and H respectively. The others are outside the purview of the committee.
And those are within motion one, right? Yep. Yes, okay. Do you want to speak to these, Ken?
Well, basically, this is the set of projects that survive the list of all the applications through the year. We have some diverse one. We're supporting the community housing, shared community housing office that we set up last night for the first year. We've got some preservations of town records. We have some drainage improvements for the cross-country trail at the middle school cross-country course. We have some parking at the town forest off of Pond Street. We have additional money for the skateboard project that was approved a couple of years ago. We have, and this is the most exciting one, I guess, on the list, is $775,000 to construct pickleball courts and tennis courts at the Fruit Street Recreation Area. We have $50,000 for engineering studies of a restroom and potential sewer line under the skate park at EMC Park. And we have $10,000 for doing a survey of Cameron Woods' property. The other articles that were in the original motion were withdrawn.
Thank you. So what motion one comprises the things written on page thirty and thirty-one? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mary Jo Onderkin, Two College Street. Would you please confirm that item E is in Edward at the bottom of page twenty-eight is excluded from motion number one?
Yes, it is. The things included in motion number one are the things that are on page thirty and thirty-one.
Thank you.
Yes. Darlene?
Hi, Darlene Hayes, One Third Road.
Can you pull the mic down toward you, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
On item G, and I know we've discussed this before, but is there a way to amend and strike the word tennis out of that? Because I...and keep it as just straight pickle courts?
My opinion, it would be out of the bounds of what was presented in the warrant to make that major deletion.
Okay.
That's my opinion, but maybe Town Council can...
One time. Okay, got some clarification. The rules that govern the CPC is they would have to recommend it, so we cannot make the real-time amendment as you're proposing.
And just for clarification, I am a member of CPC, and they all know I'm enthusiastically supportive of this amendment. My fear is that if we lose the tennis court that I've heard a rumor about at the high school, the playing of pickleball will get diminished by tennis players, which I used to be one, but not now. And it...you can have...you'll lose... Two people using one tennis court takes away from about sixteen pickleball players. But that's it, thanks.
From what I understand through the moderator is that Parks and Rec is starting, is working on a proposal for next year's budget for tennis courts.
John Ritz, 11 Erica Drive. Item J, was my understanding the boundary marking was for the town forest, not Cameron Woods? Is that incorrect?
No, the presentation we got was for Cameron Woods is where the, what the marking is going to be.
Any other comments or questions about motion one? So to ratify motion one, we need a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion one passes unanimously. Moving on to motion two.
I move that the town meeting take no action on motion number two.
The Select Board recommends no action on motion two.
Appropriation Committee recommends no action on motion two.
Is there any questions about motion number two? Okay, so when you vote yes, you're voting yes to take no action. And we will need two-thirds majority, so let's start... Hold on one second. Sorry, simple majority. All in favor of taking no action on motion number two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so motion number two, we are taking no action on. Now we're moving over to zoning bylaw amendments, starting with Article thirty-three, one single family dwelling per lot.
Hi, everyone, Gary Trendle, 31 Chamberlain Street, speaking as the Chair of the Planning Board. So we'll go ahead and start with Article thirty-three, one single family dwelling lot per unit.
Can you make a motion, please?
I sure can. The plan, we move that the town vote to approve this motion as printed in the warrants and motions pamphlet.
And you recommended it. Are there any...did you want to say anything about it?
Yeah, just a quick explanation. This article explicitly states that only one single family dwelling may be located on a lot and adds a definition of principal use to the definition section. This is not a change from what is currently done with regards to zoning review, but it aims to clarify these items.
Okay, and are there questions?
Stephen Popkus, 24 Cedar Street Extension. Can we see the rest, the context in which this modification is being made?
Do you have that available? So you're looking to see the zoning bylaws?
I want to see Article one.
Okay, do you have Article one available on a slide?
I don't have any slides for this.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to ask Josh to find the zoning bylaws and bring them up.
Let me present an alternative by asking Town Council. What does this amendment do to the context of Article one? How does it change its meaning?
Give them a moment, please.
Just trying to help.
I have a question.
Just one sec. Well, let's get this one in motion before we get another question. Okay, so Josh is about to have this up for folks to see. Mary Jo, did you have something you wanted to say while we're awaiting this to be on the screen?
Yeah, I was just looking for clarification. Does this affect in-law apartments, which is in another bylaw? That's all I want to know.
Thank you.
I can answer that one.
Okay, Ray is answering that question.
Okay, so... Can you hear me now? No.
I think you have to hold it real close.
And this affects section two, ten, dash, three.
Just one second, Steve. Ray is answering Mary Jo's question now.
Can you hear me now? Oh, good. Good evening. In response to the question presented, this doesn't have any impact on in-law apartments. This is only describing how many single-family houses are permissible in, on a single lot. If you have an in-law apartment in your single-family house, that doesn't make it into, that doesn't, that isn't affected by this definition. This definition really just codifies what is current practice.
Thank you, okay. Now I think we have what you were looking for.
Thank you very much for zooming that in. Okay, I'm going to recommend against passing this because I think that the...
Could you speak closer into the mic?
I'm sorry. I'm going to recommend against voting on this because it seems to me that by introducing this particular phrase on this... You already have everything in the clause saying that, basically, the rest of the article, the rest of the zoning laws have to be applied in that general manner. But now you're adding an extreme, what I would consider an extreme specificity that I think will end up hurting us in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing there are none, we will move to a vote. This does require a two-thirds majority. We will start by taking a voice vote. All those in favor of limiting the one single family dwelling per lot, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so because of the requirement, we need to do a count. All those in favor, please hold your ticket up. We will count you.
We have one in the back hall.
Thank you. On your left, fifty-one.
Thank you. Forty-six on your right.
Okay. Now we're changing to no votes. If you're choosing to vote no on this, please stand up and hold your pass up. Four on your left. Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you.
Seven on your right.
We had the required two-thirds majority. This vote passes. Article thirty-four, maximum gross floor area, industrial A district.
We move the article be approved as printed in the warrant and motions handout. The planning board recommends approval. Just a little bit of background, this article will allow for an increase in gross floor area from fifty to eighty percent for uses in the industrial A district by leaving the lot coverage maximum and other dimensional regulations as-is. The intent is that it will allow users in the industrial A to grow up rather than grow out, up to the maximum allowable height. So just to clarify, this does not increase the maximum allowable footprint. The building can't get any bigger with regards to the total square footage covered on the lot, and it does not allow the building to get any taller. It only allows a developer to work within the existing footprint and the existing height to get more functional square footage in a building.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Cynthia Estimer, 118 Hayward Street. Exactly where is industrial A district located?
It's up off of South Street.
That is the Lake Maspinock watershed there. Conservation Commission weigh in on any potential zoning changes here through the moderator.
Conservation Commission does not weigh in, but this doesn't change the roof area or the pavement area or anything else that might impact that.
Mary Arnott, 51 Teresa Road. I'm sorry, I think you provided a very good explanation, but I couldn't follow it. So, because I was reading this as, oh, my question is on the lot area. It says move it from fifty percent to eighty percent, but it doesn't affect the footprint. So if we're talking about the actual land lot area that they can go from fifty to eighty, how does it not affect the footprint? Or what am I missing?
So it's multiple stories, so if you had a total roof coverage of twenty-five thousand square feet and you had a two-story building, then the total gross floor area would be fifty thousand square feet because it would be over two floors.
Okay, so it's really not the lot that's being affected?
Correct.
But the building itself?
Just the building itself.
So it seems to me this is, am I the only one confused then by it saying eighty percent of lot area? I guess, huh?
Yeah. It's, John, do you want to go ahead?
Hello, everybody, John Gelsic, Principal Planner.
Sorry.
John Gelsic, Principal Planner. The formula used to calculate the gross floor area is based off of the lot size.
So why doesn't it talk about the floor area instead of the lot area?
So currently, you can have a maximum of fifty percent of gross, of, maximum of the fifty percent of the lot area as gross floor area. This would, this would increase it to eighty percent of the lot area as gross floor area. So you're not changing, so the lot size is remaining the same, the footprint is remaining the same. It is allowing more gross floor area within the building based off of the lot size itself.
Okay, so for butters, it wouldn't have, and there would still be setback requirements from the lot, ends of the lot, and it wouldn't affect?
Correct. Yards, front yard, rear yard, side yards remaining the same, lot coverage is remaining the same, and lot size and height are remaining the same.
Okay, appreciate, now I got it, thank you.
Any other questions? For this one, we need two-thirds of majority. All those in favor of changing the maximum gross floor area, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we need to take a count.
Two in the back hall.
On your right, five-four.
Thank you. On your left, forty-nine. Thank you. Okay. Anyone who is against article thirty-four, please stand with your pass.
One on your right.
Four on your left.
Zero back hall.
A zero in the front. Article thirty-four passes. Article thirty-five?
Excuse me, through the moderator point of order. Is it possible on the remaining two-thirds majority votes to start with the noes? Inherently, if you know how many no votes there are, you don't have to count all the yeses, you simply have to count enough yeses to know that you have a two-thirds majority.
Thank you. I know this count is mandated by municipal law. What does municipal law say about counting both?
So all of our zoning bylaw changes have to be reviewed by the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office, and they have been sticklers lately for the actual vote numbers, so we need to do it to satisfy them.
Good idea. Okay, article thirty-five, off-street parking.
We move the article be approved as printed in the warrant and motions handout, and the planning board recommends approval. This article aims to achieve three things. Number one, it creates new parking classification of laboratory research and development and industrial uses, which is separate from general office, medical, and dental office. Two, it reduces the parking requirement for warehouse uses from one space per one thousand square feet gross floor area to one space per two thousand square feet of gross floor area. And three, consistently references the term space after the requirement for each use category for clarity.
Does anyone have any questions about article thirty-five?
Steven Popkus, 24 Cedar Street. I just want to point out that with the previous article increasing the available gross floor space by thirty percent, potential gross space, and by increasing this space, we've been affected due to a double ratchet on increasing the number of potential parking spots for a given industrial installation. So that, just want people to be aware that these two together have substantially increased more than you would expect by just looking at the numbers in the, in the actual article.
Actually, if I can just clarify one thing, this actually decreases the number of parking spots because it goes from one parking spot from one, per one thousand square feet to one parking spot for two thousand square feet. So it decreases the minimum number of parking spots required.
I'm looking at three spaces per thousand square feet on general office space. Is that an increase or decrease?
We're not changing general office space.
Okay, so, but you have increased...
Can you please direct your question through me?
You have increased the number of potential square footage of the gross floor area, so in effect, you have increased the number of spaces in the parking. That's all, that's all I'm pointing out.
Thank you. Any other questions about article thirty-five? So article thirty-five does require a two-thirds majority. We will start with a voice vote. All in favor of article thirty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I am not hearing any noes, so if I missed you and you thought you were a no, please wave your hand. Okay. Article thirty-five passes unanimously. Okay, article thirty-six, housekeeping, gender-neutral references?
And just to clarify, the remaining three articles here are really administrative in function, they're just a little bit of cleanup. So article thirty-five, we move that the article be approved as printed in the warrants and motions handout. Sorry, thank you. Please amend that to article thirty-six. The planning board recommends approval. This article changes the currently gendered terms such as chairman to gender neutral terms such as chair.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about article thirty-six? Article thirty-six, we need two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing there's no opposition, this is passing unanimously. Article thirty-seven, I think this is one of those housekeeping articles.
Yes, article thirty-seven, housekeeping plural terms. We move the article as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Planning board recommends approval. This article changes all uses of the various sections of the zoning bylaw to singular rather than plural uses, for example, changing places of worship and other religious uses to place of worship and other religious use to address a consistency issue within these sections. Generally, only one principal use is allowed per lot, and listing these uses as plural can lead to confusion.
Okay. Any questions or comments about article thirty-seven? Seeing there are none, we will vote, we need a two-thirds majority to pass article thirty-seven. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Article thirty-seven passes unanimously. Article thirty-eight, the dimensional table.
We move the article as printed in the warrant and motions handout. Planning board recommends approval. This article lists the zoning districts and dimensional requirements in a summary table with a reference to the applicable section as an appendix to the bylaws. This is really just to help make our bylaws a little bit more readable and usable for applicants. It does not overwrite the actual bylaws themselves, it's simply a reference point so that people can look at each of the different zones and see what the various dimensional requirements
Are there any questions about article thirty-eight? Sorry. Tom Clark.
Connor Deegan, 48 Hill Press Drive. I was just curious regarding this, is there any reason that we're including this in the bylaws rather than just including it as a separate appendix that can be changed as the bylaws do anyway?
Through the moderator, the bylaws are the standard document that applicants and developers use, and we thought it made the most sense to include the dimensional table in the document that's being used by applicants as the, as part of their evaluation process.
Any further questions?
Through the moderator. I do have one minor amendment that we need to make.
Okay.
Because now that we changed the maximum gross floor area to eighty percent, we need to change the table to represent the eighty percent max GFA. We're going to amend the dimensional table, row eleven, column, column three, by replacing fifty percent with eighty percent. So our proposed amendment.
Okay, so that is an amendment that will be entered.
Second.
Thank you. So do we vote, we vote on this amendment? Yes. Okay, so this is called a friendly amendment, so we do not need to vote on the friendly amendment? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. and Mrs. Moderator.
One, one second, please. We have to amend the friendly amendment.
All right. We never expected so much controversy on these articles tonight. We, the planning board would like to amend the dimensional table, row ten, column three, by replacing fifty percent with eighty percent.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment. I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
I just want to, Steven Popkus, 24 Cedar Street Extension. I want to commend the putting this table and making sure it's available, and I want to encourage to add the other regulations that we also have to have building associated with, such as board of health regulations, so we have a central location, having run afoul of this recently. So, thank you. Please do more.
Okay, so we are now talking about article thirty-eight with the friendly amendment. We will try a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, article thirty-eight with the amendment passes unanimously. Thank you. We move on to general bylaw amendments. We are on article thirty-nine. These are housekeeping and gender, gender-neutral references.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Hopkinton as set forth in article thirty-nine of the 2022 annual town meeting warrant. This article would remove specific gender references in the general bylaws, including male and female pronouns, and chairman is changed to chair. This recognizes our reality and that we are an inclusive community. As an example, these bylaws refer to town council, police chief, fire chief, employers, applicants, property owners, people engaging in disorderly conduct, solicitors, people in violation of unregistered motor vehicle regulations, wastewater treatment operators, inseptic haulers as men. inseptic haulers as men, but today we know that anyone could be any of these and our bylaws should reflect that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? For Article 39, we need a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 39 passes unanimously.
Through the moderator. This is really just kind of correcting some issues that we noticed when we passed last year. We were trying to update the, the late penalty for violation of non-licensure of your dogs, and in doing so, setting it to what the state's minimum by the state general laws is, we had to set it to $50. This is just going back to what essentially we had in practice prior to that, which was where there is a $25 late fee rather than it just being immediately to the citation for a violation. And then instead, the violation fee would be assessed later in the year, in the, according to what we've written here, it wouldn't be assessed until July.
Does anyone have any questions? The vote needed is a simple majority. All those in favor of amending dog licensing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 40 passes unanimously. We are now moving to Land Acquisition and Disposition. Article 41, Oakhurst Road.
Madam Moderator, Madam Moderator, we move the motion as printed in the motions document.
And you recommend approval?
Yes, we do.
We kept it interesting, folks, but capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Yes.
Mike Shepard, Love Hill Street. I want to offer a little clarification on what the town's getting here. The new house that was built on the corner of Oakhurst and West Main Street, the White House, everybody's seen it. That was built on a lot that had a house on it that burned down eight to 10 years ago. And the developer came in and wanted to build on it, but he had to go to the Board of Appeals because it was a pre-existing non-conforming lot. They needed relief for side setback, they needed relief for rear setback, they needed a bunch of relief, and it was all in the form of special permits from the Board of Appeals. But those of you that have never been to the Board of Appeals, to get a special permit, it essentially becomes, let's make a deal. We'll give you this, what are you going to give for us? One of the board members during the course of the hearing mentioned that a dangerous situation exists at the end of, of Oakhurst, at the intersection of West Main Street when kids are waiting for the buses. As you know, the traffic on West Main Street is-
Hey Mike, I'm hearing that people can't hear you, so could you step closer to the mic?
I can get a little bit closer.
Thank you.
The traffic in West Main Street at school bus time is, is pretty quick. So this particular person, and I understand a lot of the parents on Oakhurst are concerned about their kids standing out there. One of the deals was, they had to take down a fence that was there. Another deal was, they had to remove some of the vegetation that was there to make it the sightlines better. But the last deal was that you offered to the town a piece of land by easement at the front of your property for the kids to stand and not be in the road. That's this little piece of land that they're offering to the town. That's about, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the Oakhurst Road easement? Seeing there are none, we need a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Article 41 passes unanimously. Article 42, Accept the Gift of Land on Fitch Avenue.
We vote that, we moved that the town vote to authorize as printed in the warrant motions document, and we approve that, we vote to approve that.
Capital Improvements recommends approval.
Thank you.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Brendan, was there anything more you were going to say?
I can read the description if you'd like. This is nearly one acre parcel, this nearly one acre parcel will make an open space connection between EMC Park and Fitch Ave., which will connect Blueberry, to Blueberry Lane. Fitch Ave. is a new street in that same subdivision that hasn't been built yet. For several years, it's been a goal of the town to create an open space and trail connection from the neighborhood to EMC Park. The land will be donated to the town.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this? Okay, Article 42, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 42 passes unanimously. Article 43, Accept the Gift of Land, Chamberlain Wayland Subdivision. It looks like the motion is to be made by the planning board.
We move the article as printed in the warrants and motions handout.
Thank you.
Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval. Capital Improvements recommends approval.
Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We recommend approval.
Any questions? Okay, we need a simple majority. Those in favor of Article 43, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 43 passes unanimously. Article 44, Land Acquisition, Conroy Property.
Hi, Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission.
May I ask you to come closer to the mic? I think it might be hard to hear.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Ed Harrow, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Before I make my motion, I wish to extend great thanks to Norman Kumalo for his hard work on this project, and for Stephen Levandowski for his inspiration. Stephen is a member of the commission and highly respected. I recommend that we take no action. Thank you.
The Select Board recommends no action.
Appropriation Committee recommends no action. Capital recommends no action.
So as a reminder, when we are voting on a article where the recommendation is no action, your aye vote is saying yes, you recommend no action. We are looking for two-thirds majority. All of those- Sorry, we're looking for a simple majority. All those in favor of no action, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Article 44 passes unanimously.
Anne Karnofsky. I live at 132 East Main.
Can I, let me see, can people hear Anne?
What?
I just want to make sure people could hear you.
Yeah, maybe I'm not quite that sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is more than a citizen's petition. It's a group called Save the Forest. It was just easier to register it with 10, actually 22 votes. Our purpose here is to preserve the forest at 71 Franklin Road Rear, close to Cross Street, Fawnridge Road, and Franklin Road. We already have the Deer Run Sanctuary of Hall in that area. It's 12 acres. Can you all hear me? Okay. And I'm proposing as the chairman of Save the Forest that the town save 70 more acres that were originally owned by Liberty Mutual and add those to the Deer Run, expanding Deer Run to about 100 acres. This was recommended by the Growth Study Committee. Unfortunately, there is a Connecticut solar company that intends soon to clear cut the forest and put all their equipment in, driving the homeowners on Fawnridge Road to sell their homes. Are you, are you still with me, Ellen?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, we already have home sales on Fawnridge Road. The neighborhood is extremely upset to have that forest clear cut. There's nothing like it in that neighborhood. So we are suggesting that the town take it by eminent domain, this has been done before in Newton and Anahat, and preserve it with the rest of the Deer Run Sanctuary, and it will be remembered for years to come. I want to quote from the town council from a letter dated April 1st to the Select Board. According to the town council, if and when the Select Board is authorized by two-thirds of the town meeting to take the property, title will immediately vest in the town. And this is a very happy conclusion to the whole argument that's been going on for several years right now. We are determined to preserve this mature forest. So all I can say now is, if everybody here, if everybody here would please give me a yes vote for Article 45.
So I think I need to make sure we all understand what your motion is. So what is the motion that you're making this evening?
The motion is that since the solar company will not sell that land to the town, they will not negotiate with the town, that the town take that forest, the 70 acres of the forest, by eminent domain, and as the law is, have it appraised and pay the solar company the just value of the land.
Okay.
Say you move the motion as it's written in the motions and warrant document, that'll help.
Also, you can read the motion in your printed material, but that's pretty long.
So you, so you are moving the motion?
Long, all long, yeah. So move the motion as printed in the document.
Move the motion as printed in the document.
Okay, thank you. So we have a citizen petition who has moved the motion as written in the document. Is there a second? I'm turning the table to our town council.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, since I was quoted, what I said in my letter was, if and when the Select Board is authorized to take the property and completes the necessary steps to do so, title will immediately vest in the town. So it's not that this vote authorizing the taking causes title to immediately vest in the town. The steps necessary are still. The Select Board would need to vote to take the property by eminent domain, they would need to have, set aside the appraised value in an ESCO fund to pay for it. So the, this article includes an appropriation of $700,000. I don't have a view as to whether that number is correct or not.
So just so we're clear, you're saying this motion authorizes the Select Board to take this land by eminent domain and have an appraisal?
The eminent domain process requires that there be an appraisal, yes.
Does anybody have any questions about this motion? Oh, sorry. Sorry, before I entertain questions, I do need to get the recommendations from the various committees. I'm sorry about that, Amy.
Okay. The Select Board recommended disapproval.
Okay, appropriations?
Appropriation Committee recommends disapproval. We understand and appreciate the advocacy that's going through, that Anne Karnofsky is petitioning here, but our concern on the Appropriation Committee that although it's for seven, it's for $700,000 in the motion, or whatever price is determined to be the just cost by appraisal, and from the assessor, it could be in order of 2.1 million dollars plus, and it does not include the legal fees because we're trying to take this by eminent domain, so there's just a lot of unknowns, so we do not approve.
Thank you. Capital Improvement?
Capital Improvements recommends disapproval.
Okay. Thank you. Now we will take comments. Hi.
Madam Moderator, Brian Herr, Hayden Rose Street. Through the moderator, if I could please, Mr. Mayares, did you write this motion or did this motion come from the petitioner?
I'm going to dump this one over to Brian.
This is the petitioner's motion. I helped her along the way. I can't give her legal advice, but in terms of trying to craft it into something that is the town meeting would typically see, I can try to do that. But ultimately, I can't overrule the person who has brought the petition, and so this is what Anne wanted to put into the motion.
Thank you. A follow-on, if I could, please?
Yes.
Mr. Mayares, do you see this motion as being in order?
I'm, I guess I don't quite understand. This is a motion with, the only question for point of order is, is it within the four corners of the article, which it certainly is? The other objections that have been raised here don't make the article out of order, it just makes the issue a bit more problematic.
Last one, if I could, please. Is there a funding source, though, associated with this motion? If there's not a funding source, how is it in order?
Raise and appropriate, it would come out of taxes.
Thank you.
Can I, one second. Can I ask appropriations to explain that? Okay. The question was, where would the funding come from?
So, right now, we, it is not funded in the budget. I guess it has been discussed that possibly there might have to be a special town meeting or that it, we don't have any room within the levy, there's no excess levy capacity, so it would either be through cuts or a special town meeting to fund this.
Thank you. Muriel.
Muriel Kramer, 39 North Street. I too appreciate the intent of the petitioners. I stand in opposition of this. I have a question. Do we have an appraisal for that property to consider as part of this article?
Madam Moderator, the town assessors have appraised that property so far at about 2.1 million, 2.07 million. So the town assessors, and that's not an appraisal, that's a tax assessment, so that would be our baseline thing we would look at, so we think we would be looking at that plus whatever the cost would be for the adverse taking. taking.
Just as a point of clarification, if I could ask a follow-on. I think for an eminent domain taking, we actually have to have an appraisal. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Stephen Popkas, twenty-four Cedar Street Extension. I stand against this motion for a lot of reasons. I think the two point one assessment is quite conservative. I factored in at fifty thousand dollars an acre, closer to three and a half million, but, and, plus the legal fees. But in addition to which, we have a very robust planning board that can sit there and make the use of the land appropriate and aesthetic and good. We trust them for all the other subdivisions. I don't see why we can't trust them for this. And I have absolutely no problem with more solar. If there was a commercial solar installation in my backyard instead of what is going on on Lincoln Street, I'd be right there with it.
Thank you. Darlene?
Darlene Hayes, one-third Road. I stand in opposition, and as much as like I don't want to see forests and trees clear cut, I feel like it's saying, here's a blank check, and also not respecting that a business bought this property. The town had the option, could have tried to buy it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Tom Robertson, fifteen Fawn Ridge Road.
Could you tilt the mic up a little bit?
Like so?
And maybe get a little closer. Thank you.
I'm in favor of exploring this warrant or this article to make it go through. I don't understand where the town came up with the appraisal of two point one whatever for undeveloped land, and that seems inappropriate. I do believe that I moved to Hopkinton and love this town because of its open space, and that as far as funding sources go, we do have an open space fund, or I'm not sure what it's referred to, but I pay into it every year and have for the last twenty-plus years. This property is a unique property, and then it serves as a trails that connect East Hopkinton all the way to Hopkinton State Park. It has been in use by the community for years. Liberty Mutual, in fact, extended the trails that the property used so that their employees could benefit from wandering this property. This is not a case where a property rights case that is, would typically be presented because this out-of-state company, not a Hopkinton resident, not a homeowner, decided to purchase this property to, for financial profit, and not for the benefit of the community. That property has been a way of life for me and hundreds of other Hopkinton residents throughout the, throughout the twenty years that I've been here, for cross-country skiing, for hiking, for biking, and is...
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
I think that growth, for the sake of growth, for a few tax dollars, if you're talking about the price of a single-family home here to destroy a hundred acres...
Thank you.
Matt Kizner, twenty-one Curtis Road. I'd like to briefly start as a private citizen who, much as we just heard, laments the loss of green space and open space in this town. I have biked in there, I have hiked in there, and I recently had the pleasure of taking my eighteenth-month-old for a nature walk in there. I very much appreciate that, and I'd be lying to the people here if I said that the agrarian and enforested nature of this community isn't why I moved here. It very much was. However, as capital did, I stand in open disapproval of this motion. I worry about the chilling message that it would send to businesses looking to work with our town if the commitments made by this town and the residents cannot be believed to be honored. We're going to have a discussion later about potentially helping Lykan continue to grow in this town. We need to be mindful of what it means when we make a decision as this town. We had the option to buy this property. We did not. I wish we had. We didn't. We sold the property, and it's now owned by an independent business. We've heard significantly here about the loss of revenue and growth in the town, and while I understand that it hurts to potentially see the loss of the land, and I will truly feel that loss, we must be mindful of what it means to honor our commitments or to become a community that cannot be trusted. I would ask us to be a community that can be trusted.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mary Wyckoff, ninety-two Davis Road, Hopkinton, of course. And I've been here since nineteen forty-six. And as a child, of course, it was a farm country, and you could ride horses anywhere. We're the ones that have the signs for four ninety-five that says, no horses allowed. Because when it first opened up, we were still trying to ride along four ninety-five. But I have come before the Selectman before to make this town the top of the list, and that's why we started the Arts Building. I was on the first chair of that. We started the Poly Arts. I was on that chair. And I think that four or five, six, or even seven million is peanuts for the amount of new houses being built right now, that that extra tax money's going to come in anyway. So, this nickel and diming, when you can't replace a full forest that's all grown, if you cut it all down, that can, even if you made a mistake, which I think you did, so there's some goof-up somewhere where that got slipped by us without me even knowing. And I think a lot of us here don't know the significance, but Ann is right about one thing. East Main section doesn't get all of the great stuff that the rest of the, you know, down Fruit Street and down to the beautiful new dog park, and everybody's coming and they all love it, and they're all younger people, and they all like to, it's a whole different generation coming into Hopkinton. They're bike riders, they're runners, joggers, and for nature. And I think that's a big mistake, and there must be a way with eminent domain in this case, maybe something we missed, so we didn't get it for the town. But we've got to start thinking ahead, that building bigger houses and more houses is not going to be what's going to attract people here. It's the jobs and the way the community runs. And so, I say, please vote yes for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold, please hold your applause.
Brendan Tedstone, Pleasant Street. I stand in opposition of this article strictly because of the, I feel like it has not been vetted properly. We don't have an accurate amount of money that we're going to spend on this. Conceptually, I like the fact that we like to save open space. I'm a member on the, I'm a liaison on the open space. I'm a big fan of the open space. However, this is just not a cooked recipe right now, where seven hundred thousand dollars, I feel, is probably, you know, a sixth, a fifth or a sixth of the actual cost that it will be. So, before I can vote yes or no, I need to have a more accurate appraisal to move forward for my, for my consideration.
Thank you. Ken?
Ken Weissmattel, one forty-five Ash Street. I agree with the proponent that cutting down trees to install a solar farm doesn't make a lot of sense. However, that isn't the policy of the Commonwealth. The laws that they set up in permitting solar farms makes it near impossible for a planning board to say no. Basically, it's one of those really well-protected uses. I don't agree with the policy, but that's the policy of the Commonwealth, is to go solar and reduce our carbon emissions. I strongly disagree with the values that people are saying what this property is worth. With solar, the developer gets a guaranteed stream of income for twenty years. I suspect every year that's well north of four, five hundred thousand for a project of this size. Think about what you would pay for a guaranteed stream of income of four hundred thousand dollars today. A lot of you guys can do that math, but you're talking four, five million dollars for a permitted solar project, of which they're going to invest about two and a half million dollars for just the panels. Solar business is a very, very profitable business, and we're not going to buy this for seven hundred thousand or a million-two. It's, it's four to five, six million dollars minimum, and that might be...
Can I get you to wrap up your thought, please?
Sure. So, basically, with that, I urge disapproval of this article.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Arnot, fifty-one Teresa Road. I stand in support of this article, and I realize there's a lot of opposition to it. But I'd ask you to take a step back and think about how many acres we have lost in Hopkinton that of mature trees that have just been cleared out within residential areas and all over town. It's proven that every mature, a group of mature trees, seven to eight trees, produces enough oxygen for a person to breathe for an entire year. So, that's an important point. But as a town, we're willing to spend one point six million to resurface playing fields at Fruit Street, but it seems to me we're not willing to look at spending maybe a couple million dollars to save the quality of life and the unique property in town. I think that since we don't have the exact number, it is undeveloped, it could come in around the amount that Ann has proposed, it could come in more. But I think if we take the long-range view on the quality of life in Hopkinton, I think it's a good investment to save this very unique property. So, I asked the voters here, we're fighting a lot of opposition from our committees, and they do a wonderful job in running our town, but in this case, I'd have to stand against them and say, please vote to save this unique property. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
Gary Trendle, thirty-one Chamberlain Street. I'd just like to clarify two things. The first is that with the, with the approval of this commercial solar project, the applicant actually is going to donate fifty-two of those acres to conservation. So, I think it's worth noting that there is a sizable chunk of land that will be preserved as part of that project. And secondly, they are also preserving the majority of the trails that go through it or rerouting those that are affected.
Thank you.
Ed Harrow, eight Spring Lane. Speaking as an individual, I've walked the property. It's lovely. I understand, but I really get Ken's numbers, and I don't see how this town can possibly accomplish what is desired by the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, before you have another chance, let me see if there's other folks who haven't spoken yet. Hi.
Dora Schmidt, forty-nine Franklin Road.
Could you step into the mic a little bit?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yes. Dora Schmidt, forty-nine Franklin Road. In the comment that the last person just said, which fifty-two acres is that? Is there a map of that, or what trails are being, or being saved?
Let me, let me find out. Thank you. Mr. Trendle?
I don't know if we have the ability to pull up the map. I think that'd be a little hard to dig out. It does include the pond that's back behind. There are some pretty significant buffer zones around the solar. It's, it's an unusual lot, so it's hard to describe the exact details of it. If you look in the map here, it's up in the, it's spread out around the lot. It's, it's hard to describe exactly where it is.
All right. My question is, we've been lied before to by legacy, and any open space area is a swamp. So, I'm assuming then that would be the pond that's on the property in any swamp area, that they can't put the solar in. How do we, how do we get any proof of this?
Thank you. So, I think what you might be asking is, is there a way to get a map of which fifty-two acres would be donated?
Yes, that's my question, and if it's any, if it's even viable for anybody to walk on or anything else. I would love for you to save the whole property, because I...
So, it looks like we may actually have some more information about what those fifty-two acres are, so hang tight. Sorry, sir, I don't think Jackie's spoken tonight on this.
Jackie Potenzoni, twelve Wood Street. My concern with this article is the word eminent domain. I think eminent domain should be used in extreme cases. Is this an extreme, extreme case? I can't decide tonight. But what is the difference if the land, they have seven hundred thousand dollars here? What is the difference in price if the appraisal comes in higher? Do we have to go back to Town Meeting if it's worth more, or is it covered under this article? If it's a higher-valued property, will it still be covered under this article?
So, I think you might have more than one question there. I, I think it might be useful for Council to explain to us what eminent domain would look like. Ray, could you take that? Or Brian? Ray?
Brian's busy working on the map, so I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
This article proposes to appropriate seven hundred thousand dollars. The steps involved in eminent domain are essentially, first, the Select Board would need to get an appraisal. Second, the, at the time that a taking was recorded at the Register of Deeds, an amount equal to that appraisal needs to be put into an escrow for the benefit of the property owner. That means that the property owner, that the title vests immediately in the town, but the property owner gets his money immediately, even if he was going to contest it. So, the Select Board will need to, if this article passes, the Select Board will be authorized to proceed, not compelled, but authorized to proceed. And the first step would be to get an appraisal. If the appraisal comes in higher than the amount appropriated, the Select Board don't have the money, you know, sort of lying around somewhere. They have to come back to Town Meeting and get it appropriated. Now, would that happen as a special Town Meeting, or would it happen at some future annual Town Meeting? It's hard, it's hard to know what they would choose to do. But it would have to come back here, and the full amount of the appraisal would need to be appropriated. At that point, they'd be prepared to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'm trying to make sure I understand this. Does the seven hundred thousand dollars that's in this article include that appraisal? Or how did they, how does someone pay for an appraisal?
Generally speaking, the, when the town needs an appraisal, when the Select Board needs an appraisal, the town manager finds the money.
So, I find it hard to believe all this acreage would be, only be seven hundred thousand dollars. And I feel like the appraisal should have been brought to Town Meeting before this petition was brought to Town Meeting, to give us clarification to vote on it. So, I don't support this article.
Thank you. Before we take any more questions, I think we do now have a map that shows an overlay... They're working on it. Let's take your question while they keep working on it.
Robert Ionte, fifty Franklin Road. I'd just like to point out, I've heard a lot of comments about how people really appreciate the forest and regret the loss of open space and forest lands in particular in this town. But there's a problem in trying to affect this article, or there's a problem with taking or reluctance to use eminent domain, or there's a reluctance to appropriate funds, and that it's quite expensive. And I've heard all these articles a number of times before, because this is not the first time this particular piece of property's come before the town. As everyone has said, or many people have said up to now, it's too bad we didn't buy this before. And I've heard that a number of times in Hopkinton. There are lots of times when we've said, it's too bad we didn't buy that land when we had the chance. The reason that Ann is proposing eminent domain at this point is because all, a number of other efforts to do something about acquiring this land have failed, and there are always technical reasons. I think what Ann is really asking is that the town pull together and actually try to accomplish something. Let's... accomplish something. Let's act on our own desire to preserve open space and to preserve the forest, and let's actually go forth and, you know, put our heads together and figure out how to get it done. Eminent domain may be the only technique left to us, and it may require some more steps to get the appraisal and to appropriate the funds.
Can I get you to start wrapping up, please?
But I really strongly feel we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to clarify that the article lays out what's being requested. I think, let's see, everybody has spoken already. We have a map. Okay, we have a map. Over to Gary.
All right, so I'm just gonna, it's Gary Trendle, 31 Chamberlain Street. I'm gonna explain a couple of things here. In the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a hashed-out area with a building. That's the Liberty Mutual Building itself on the corner of Franklin and Cross. That is not included in these calculations. The lower right-hand corner.
Does anyone have a laser pointer? Let's get one from now on.
Yep. I don't have a mouse here, but John's gonna go over and move the mouse so we can describe the area. So...
Okay, we got a mouse.
The lower right-hand, almost square section, that is the actual building parcel itself that is not included in this calculation, that was split off from the main parcel. If you look at the irregular shape in the middle with all the slightly slanted horizontal lines, the solar array itself, John?
So it looks like first he did the...
The...
Hold on, hold on.
All right, so the C-shaped section that is in the middle of the lot, that is the solar array itself. That's the 22-ish acres that is being cleared for the commercial solar array. And then the hatched area all around it, which, all around that section, that is the 52 acres that will be donated to open space. Just to clarify, some of that is wetland, but that also includes existing trail areas, and that also includes some areas where trails are going to be relocated, which are not wetland.
It actually is wetlands, and then how would people access that? If the road's there, it's all inside where they could access it?
I believe as part of the proposal, they're including a parking lot, a small parking lot. I think it's a two-car lot over off of Cross Street. And again, it's, the trails are largely accessible in the same way they are today.
So the parking lot would be right before the pond that's there?
I believe it's near the pond, yes. And we did work with HALT and with Open Space to build that into the proposal.
Okay. And then my other question is, is if we get some action, they've already put up the barriers to start clearcutting. So the clearcutting is probably gonna come before you can save it if we don't do something.
I'm gonna defer to town council on that. That's out of my domain.
Yeah. So what would be the timing?
I don't know the answer to that question. As I indicated, the steps are, you'd have to get an appraisal. Somebody else would have to tell you how long that's going to take to complete an appraisal, but at least a few weeks. And then there'd be the issue of calling a special town meeting if it's necessary to get extra money. That takes a few weeks.
So can we vote on some, to do a special meeting, or to have them not proceed clearcutting before we vote on that, or find out an appraisal price?
Clearcutting is something that is permitted by right, so they are perfectly within their rights to clearcut when they're ready to do so.
And the article that we're voting on is what's written here in the warrant?
Okay, and then that would be at the $700,000 price, then?
Well, that's authorizing...
I'll try that.
Sorry?
So the $700,000 is the amount of money that is proposed to be appropriated here.
Okay.
There isn't, it doesn't come with a guarantee that the appraisal will come in at $700,000. It's, the property owner has not said that $700,000 will be a sufficient amount. So...
I guess I'm more confused now than before.
Okay.
So the article was, is a citizen petition, and the number was derived by the citizen. There hasn't been a formal appraisal of the property, and that would be the first step, I think. If this passes, then the select board would be authorized to seek an appraisal. But depending on the appraisal, we might have to have a special town meeting if it's more than $700,000.
So only if it's more than $700,000, you're saying we have a special meeting?
I believe that's right. If the appraisal came in at 700 or under 700, if we pass this, it would just keep going.
That's correct. You only need a special town meeting if, for some reason, you need to appropriate additional money.
Okay. And how long do you think that would take?
To call a special town meeting?
Or to get the, well, the appraisal and have them accept the appraisal, or whatever?
Okay, so...
I'm just saying that they've already set the stuff up to start clearcutting. We're talking about possibly, like, finding out an actual price. What, obviously, the clearcutting might come first, so what do you do?
I think what we just heard from town council is that the appraisal could take some number of weeks. And once there's the appraisal, then depending on how much they're looking for, would decide if they needed to call a special town meeting or not. As you know, it's a little hard to get a quorum at town meeting, so we'd wanna be really thoughtful about when we tried to hold it. I don't know, Ray, if we knew we needed to call one, like, how long? Because we have to post a warrant, right?
So, yes, so, well, the key thing is that, is under our charter, the select board would have to vote to open the warrant, and then they would have to keep it open for two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, so there's that. Once it's, once the warrant is closed and is signed by the select board, is it seven days? I think it's seven, subject to check. It's either seven or 14 days, but, subject to check, I think it's seven days. So it can be done reasonably quickly, but still not less, still not less than three weeks.
Right, so it sounds like we're talking about...
Well, there's, that's another thing that the finance people are reminding us, that it's not as simple as just going to town meeting and appropriating more money, because we are at the levy limit. So you're, I, Brian tells me I chose wrong. I said it's 14 days, so now we're up to a minimum of four weeks. So...
So we have to...
But you have to do, if you appropriate more money than the levy limit will allow, then something's gotta give. And one thing you could do is to call a special election and have a debt exclusion. That takes some time. And another thing is to come, call a special town meeting and reduce other appropriations somewhere else.
Through the moderator?
Depending on whether we're talking about a few, a small amount or a big amount, I don't know how possible that even is.
So it sounds like it's a lot of steps, and they aren't, they're just started in this article, it seems like. Yes, Darlene? Through the moderator, I'd like to move the question. Okay, so we need a two-thirds vote to stop discussion and vote. All those in favor of stopping discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The voice vote carries, so we are stopping discussion. Clear two-thirds. So now we are going to take a vote. There's no more opportunity for discussion. There's no more opportunity. We're taking a vote now.
Can you take a vote that I could say a final word?
Nope.
I'm sorry, that's not gonna be permitted. We're gonna take a vote. It's a two-thirds majority to pass. Okay, let's start with a voice vote. This would need two-thirds majority to pass. Article 45. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. I think we need to do a standing vote, so a reminder for those folks who are for the land acquisition, please stand and hold your pass. Yes, right now, the vote is, if you are voting to pass it, please stand and hold your paper. Have the HCM folks voted up there?
Zero back hall.
Thank you. Yes?
Seven on your right. Nineteen on your left.
Thank you. So everyone may be seated. Front was zero, back was zero, right was seven, left was nineteen. Okay, all of those against Article 45, please stand and hold your ticket.
Three in the back. On the left, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Forty-five on your right.
Is this on?
Hello?
Yeah. So we have more than two-thirds who voted no. Article 45 has been defeated.
Point of order, please. Could you say how many people actually voted, and what was the yea and what was the nay, please, the count?
There were 26 yea votes and 87 nay votes. Moving on to Article 46, I'm gonna ask Patrick Atwell to step in for me for this article.
For Article 46?
Madam Moderator, I just want to make clarification, point of order on the vote. So only 113 people voted, because we had 26 nays and 87, I mean, 26 yes and 87 no?
That's correct.
So do we still have a quorum on the floor?
Not right now. We did, we could have had to vote, there could have been people that didn't vote.
Just for clarification, people can abstain from voting.
I realize that, but I'm just wondering if we still have a quorum on the floor, if people just didn't vote, or...
So since there was a question on a quorum, now we have to stop and take a count. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
But there's no bearing on the last article.
So I've just been advised by council, so we're gonna do a quorum count, but the vote still stands. We don't go backwards. So now we're gonna take a quorum count, so we're gonna ask everybody to come back in, take a seat, and we'll start the count.
Is her right? They said she didn't, she asked.
It's gonna be seven of us.
You only need a quorum for one or two.
Maybe we should ask, right?
Ms. Moderator, may I ask a question?
Um, yeah.
Given that the...
Can you just approach the mic? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Yep.
Given the determination of the quorum is happening after the vote, does that invalidate the previous vote?
It does not.
Okay.
So the vote stands on Article 45. Right now, we're determining if we can continue the meeting this evening. Our quorum is 128, so we're trying to see how many people are in the house. Yes?
Fifty on your left.
Okay, let's see. Did you count? Okay, sorry, you're, you're waiting for people to stand up with their ballots? Okay. So everybody to my right, can you please stand up and hold your green paper so that you can be counted? Brian, did you wanna make a comment?
Uh, Madam Moderator, while we're counting, Lykan has been here the last two evenings on, depending on how this plays out, even before we adjourn tonight, if we have to come back tomorrow night, which hopefully we do not, but could they present this evening and then let them be on their way if we have to return tomorrow evening?
I don't know. Let me find out.
And then we could take the vote, you know, without pulling them out for another night.
Let me find out. Janine?
So we have 121 people.
We currently have 119 people in the room. We do not have a quorum, so we will have to adjourn for the evening. Brian, we don't have enough people to vote to allow a presentation. We will be back here tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Look forward to seeing everybody.